Didn't know what the Paris agreement was. It was kept.
Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Aye. We hadn't coached you along, think where you'd have been, pal. But then you had us.
Yeah, exactly.
I move we go into closed session of the City Council to discuss strategy with council about matters that are presently in litigation because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Close session emails.
I move we go into closed session of the City Council to discuss strategy with council about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would likely to be prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Are you?
What?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Where are we at?
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron? Aye.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Do we stand for a moment of silence, prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no proclamations that I know of, so we'll go to board appointments and commissions and committees. Nan Wilson, Art Center Board of Trustees, come on up, Nan, tell us a little bit about why you want to serve.
Hello, how are you all?
Good.
Good, thank you.
I have had a lifelong relationship with the Art Center. I started going to the Art Center when I was a child and I have remained involved with the Art Center all of my life. I've been an art teacher there, I've served as education coordinator. I am now teaching at Briar Cliff University for the last 10 years, Chair of the Art Department. I teach art history, our students are very involved, Jeff Baldus and I make sure that our students are very involved with the Art Center. And I just, I think this would be a good fit for me to serve on the Board of Trustees, to help in whatever way I can with the Art Center.
Teaching at Briar Cliff, you know where that's at, don't you, Alex?
(laughing).
I just wanted to make sure, sometimes you forget there are two of those colleges in this community, so I wanted to remind you that there is only one.
That's right.
We appreciate your talents.
Nan helped us, and, oh gosh, who was it? Anyway, we didn't work out very good, but we did a city sign thing and Nan was very, very helpful in that particular process.
Someday we might pick that up again.
Yeah, probably should.
Right.
How many openings do we have?
Two openings and we have three openings.
Okay. Thank you.
Probably should.
Nan helped us, and, oh gosh, who was it? Anyway, we didn't work out very good, but we did a city sign thing and Nan was very, very helpful in that particular process.
Someday we might pick that up again.
Yeah, probably should.
Right.
How many openings do we have?
Two openings and four applicants.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Scott.
You should talk. I'm here to reapply for, to continue my membership on the Parks and Rec Board. I would like to stay involved in the stuff that we've started and see it get finished, and I enjoy it.
That's good, you've done a good job.
Well, the whole committee is a lot of fun to be on and it's a fun project to get involved with because of the things you're working with.
So what's next in the next cycle of do Parks and Rec?
You'll just have to wait and see, Pete.
Ooh. No ideas?
Probably the Riverfront, that's probably one of ours.
Well, there's a lot of ideas, but, you know, it takes a little of this to make those ideas into reality, so we'll just have to see. But we've got some, we've got some nice ideas. I think the new center that you're going to talk about today is a big hit, and I see there's a campground possibly involved with that. And then obviously another campground that I would be more personally involved with as far as where the grandparents can take their kids and stuff like that. And the Riverfront's really exciting, so that's, that's plenty.
Well, I certainly appreciate you being part of the committee over the last three years.
Well, thanks.
You've done a great job.
Thanks, I've enjoyed it.
How many openings do we have?
Two openings and four applicants.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda, which today is items 3 through 17H. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is called for by a council member. You want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it. State your name and address for the record. If you want to come up on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Through the reading of the council minutes of January 8th and 20th, 2018, I'll abstain on that because I wasn't here for the 20th meeting. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of January 9th, 2018. Anybody here to speak on that? I have a question, Susan. The Board of Adjustment made recommendations, or appeared to me to make some recommendations, and then when you did your motion, you didn't include those. Is there a reason for that?
Susan Stewart, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission.
No, this was the Board of Adjustment.
No, no, I'm being a good person in saying what I'm supposed to say.
Oh, what did you say? I'm sorry.
So what's your question again? Why?
Well, you had conditions that you placed, or, reading the minutes, it appeared you were going to place some conditions on this use, but when you did it, it was just a plain accepting the conditional use permit.
Correct. As with many of our meetings, both the Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustment, a lot of times we hash things around, sometimes they end up, sometimes they don't. In this one, it was just an approval of the application as presented to us with all those in favor but one. There was discussion about not having a retail business, conditions, things like that, but they were just, I would say, errant questions posed by different members of the Board of Adjustment that never really materialized into conditions that were placed on the motion.
But the applicant didn't seem to be opposed, now I'm reading into the minutes, of those conditions.
No, that's right, that's right.
So I wonder why you wouldn't?
I can't explain it, most of those were not my questions.
What's that?
I can't explain it, most of those were not my questions, I think, you know, one member may have talked about limiting it to a retail establishment, can't remember what the other conditions were. The other proposed conditions, that is.
Well, I'd like to know if they're willing to still impose those conditions, because I thought that's, I thought that's kind of what persuaded the Board of Adjustment to approve the permit, Susan.
Yeah, even the statements that were made by the petitioner about limiting it to a retail business, some of the other things.
Yes.
Yeah, I just can't explain why no one added those to the motion. No one saw a fit to want to amend the motion to add those or to place those on the motion. Perhaps what you could say is that we took what we were told on the record and that's, and we decided that it was sufficient to cause us to just approve, work with adjustment as proposed.
And council, I would note that.
No, you've got to come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
I just wanted to note that I am the petitioner, Mercedes Ivener, and I did appear, I know you asked if anyone was here.
You need an address, please.
Sorry. I am the new homeowner of the 3725. My current residence is at 3400 Talbot Road.
Okay, thank you.
I could speak to that partially. I believe that the city staff who was there that day, Chris Madsen, did state that as the work-live code presents, it does state no retail business could be there. So I think, I believe that's already in the code and maybe on that particular issue. They did ask me if I would mind if it was limited to just the business being written down as a floral design business, and I, of course, am not opposed to that. That would be my only use in terms of the business at that property. I think those were the two issues that were raised, if I'm correct. So the retail issue being, no, that we won't be doing retail at this spot, will be a very, basically, an artist studio in the basement. We make the flowers and we deliver them, and I'm just hoping that this home can better help me mesh my role as a mother along with my career, so that my kids and my family can be upstairs and they can partake in life with me while I'm working, because there are some late evenings. So it's kind of like, it's a little non-traditional, but we're sort of, we bought this house as a second home, not a lake home or ski home, but a work home, an in-town home, where we can, again, I can produce my art that I consider it to be. We're a small event florist in town and we chopped off our one-day-a-month retail leg that we used to have. That was the only day we invited the public in the past. We've talked with the city, city staff has been in favor of it. They have come out to the home, measured the driveway for parking, and they were both in favor of it at the time of the Board of Adjustment hearing. They still are. The Board of Adjustment heard this. No new information has come forward since that time when they made the decision to approve our permit application. And so I'm here today hoping to have your support and to move forward on this exciting time for our family and move towards continuing to, we're doing some updates in terms of hardwood floors and painting the home, et cetera. Any minimal traffic that's been on the park, been on the streets lately has been my couple contractors who are doing the flooring, but other than that, we're hopeful that we'll be an asset to the neighborhood and we can't see it being a difficult business in that area. Thank you.
Is that the case, Mr. Madsen, what she stated?
Yeah, I was just going to just clarify, it's ultimately the Board of Adjustment's decision, not the city staff's decision. We made our decision based on the record, this turning into a retail business. I believe that what the petitioner said convinced her that we didn't need that condition. But it was our decision, not the staff's decision. I just want to point that out, that it is the Board of Adjustment that ruled.
No, I understand it.
Yeah.
She stated that the city code says something. That's entirely different than what you're saying. That's what I want clarification on.
Chris Madsen, Senior Planner, Retail Sales Would Not Be Allowed As Part Of A Work-Live Use.
Okay.
So in this case, it's a, more of a floral studio that she would then deliver her product to various different clients. Other type of uses would be office, architectural office, law firm type office, those would be allowed as well, but retail sales would not be allowed.
Okay. Chris, do you know, just off the top of your head, how many conditional use permits for a work-live environment are in, have been approved so far and are currently active in the city?
Only one. At Summit and 18th Street, there's a law firm at that intersection, and they've received the same permitting.
Okay, thank you.
I got, I do have one more question. So if I wanted to buy a bouquet of flowers, I couldn't come to your house, you'd have to deliver, is that the?
That's correct, and I could just speak to that for a moment. We're primarily focused on events, so we do wedding, that's our primary focus. We do corporate parties. The only way that we, so if you called me and asked for a bouquet, I'd have to give you a referral to another florist in town. I tell people I'm not a retail florist. We do events. We've had some customers that really love our flowers and want a way to get them in the community, so we came up with the idea that we could provide a subscription service once a month. Second Friday of every month, we make flowers in our basement and I deliver them out into the community. We just have a limited number right now, but we hope we'll have a couple more people joining that. But that's the only way I would tell you, you could get a bouquet from us, would be you'd have to sign up for our once-a-month delivery. Other than that, we would just be doing events.
Wonderful.
And that was important to me. She has, she has a subscription service, and I was concerned, because I know I wouldn't want to have flowers delivered to me. I would want to pick them up. I would not want to wait at home. And she did say she has, I think, 12 of these subscription service people, she wants to have as many as 20, and they would all have to be delivered, that she wouldn't allow you to pick them up. To me, that was important, a way to, of moderating the traffic and making it un-retail.
Great. Great idea.
Chris, I read the minutes the same way the mayor did about the question that it would not turn into a retail business, so really, because I read your response to be, well, you could put that as a condition, that it won't be retail, but you're saying we don't really need to do.
You don't need.
Excuse me, we don't have to have the Board of Adjustment, we don't need to ask them to do that.
Correct. The retail would be a code requirement today. I know there was discussion of limiting to only this use for the conditional use permit, that it couldn't be any other kind of office. Any other type of live-work would have had to come back through the Board of Adjustment, and they ultimately did not put that requirement on the motion.
But by the ordinance itself, it cannot be a retail business.
Correct.
Correct. So there will have to be monitoring to enforce that?
What was that, Susan?
There will have to be monitoring to enforce that if there is ever to be an issue about whether it is a retail business, because the code does not allow a retail business.
Okay, thank you. President's answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number five is a resolution granting prior approval to the 2017 Sioux City Morning Side Partners for the Property Tax Redemption for Improvement made to the Morning Hills and Southview Apartment Projects. Six, I'm staying on that item five for conflicting interests. Six is a resolution supporting an IEDA application for the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program for Black and Blue Development Property at 2800 Rock of Floyd Boulevard.
I have a question now. This housing credit, it's up to $15,000 per unit, I understand. Do we know how much a unit he's going to be getting? Does it, he's making an investment, $2.3 million, and $283,000 of that is investment credit, so is that how we figure it out?
Well, the, let's look at the application. Chris Myers, Economic Development Specialist.
There is a top side limitation, if that's what you're asking.
The, the total amount of the tax credits includes the investment, that number a little bit, makes it kind of, makes it harder to figure out.
So at this point, we don't know what he's going to get per unit, then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, he's going to get the maximum of $15,000 per unit on the, they get 10, technically it's 10% of the first $150,000 that they put into the project, and then on top of that, they get the refund of the sales and use tax. So whatever his, whatever applies to the sales tax, you know, his construct, his materials that go into the project would be subject to that.
Okay, so it's up to $15,000, I mean 15, yeah, $15,000 per unit.
Yes.
Up to.
Yeah, assuming he, we just assume that they're all going to spend at least $150,000 on the, on the.
How many units is he, is it 80? Is, I'm not sure if I saw.
This is 12 units, six side-by-side, six two-unit buildings. The total project.
Yeah, because this is the second phase, I think, right?
This is the second phase, yeah. They're allowed to break it up into different phases to maximize the tax credits that they get back out of the program. Eventually, they're going to have 80 units there.
That's what I was thinking.
When they're finished.
Okay. Okay. Makes sense.
Seven is a resolution awarding and purchasing for Bountree Medical for Small Medical Equipment Supplies and Pharmaceuticals for the Fire Department EMS Division. Can we skip? Pardon me?
I thought there was seven, it's cooked, pardon. Oh, no, it was off, yeah, nevermind.
It's off.
Yep, I apologize.
Eight is a resolution approving amendment number one to the Personnel Manual and Salary Schedule For EMS Employees. I have a question for Chief Everett on this.
So do I, we haven't even been in business and we already are.
Yeah, well, yeah, and normally I would have tried to reach you today, but it was my schedule that messed me up, chief.
Sure, Chief Everett.
Thanks. No, I just have a, it's a very basic question, but I just want to make sure I understand it. To avoid rank pay compression, can you just explain to me what the rank?
What we meant by that?
Yes, please.
Sure. Basically, between the ranks of emergency medical technician and then lead medic, and from lead medic to compliance officer, and compliance officer to director, we didn't want to set it up to where a rank that's lower than another could potentially be making more.
So it's the?
It's similar to what we, a problem we had on the Fire Department years ago where we had some, for example, firefighters making more than lieutenants, lieutenant making more than captains, things like that. So this basically just eliminates that possibility, basically.
And these are all stated in ranges of pay?
Right.
So they affect the, they affect just these positions?
Right.
And that's so that they'll be in line overall with what the rank and file would be, is what you're, is what you're saying? What the?
No, you can't have an EMT making more than an EMT supervisor.
Than a lead medic, than a supervisor.
Right.
So basically, your, yeah, your EMTs, for example, aren't making more than the supervisors.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
But why didn't we know that when we went in?
Well, we use the, frankly, it was me, I use the Sulan paramedics salary ranges, and until we really dialed in who was getting paid what, based on what they came over at.
So we're going to be paying more than what we originally anticipated, I can guarantee you now.
I would not say that.
Well, I would say that. You have to say that. You cannot not say that, because you, when you got this thing going, you found out that some of your EMTs were making as much or more than your technicians, and so now the only way to solve that problem is to raise the pay. So the only way to raise the pay is to pay more.
We're not raising the pay.
Well, sure you are.
No.
Well, you're.
Capping the pay.
What?
We went from a range for EMT of $10 to $26.
And where was it originally?
That was it originally, and now we're going 10 to 20.
The only way you would be raising pay is, like, say for instance, number two, the lead medic.
Because I looked at this two weeks.
Would be if it was, so $16 to $28, and then to change the pay range to 20, 50 to $25.
Right, but this bottom went way up.
The only way it would be increasing is say if you were paying someone $18.
So you're going to pay more because that bottom's going way up.
And now the new, the new minimum is 2050. You're raising them from $18 to $25.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter, because they weren't at the top to begin.
That's where it would be increasing.
Yeah.
Oh, how many employees this is affecting?
Yeah, you can't estimate the cost, but it's definitely there.
Anyone that's currently being paid at these levels?
Right now, it's affecting no one.
Okay.
Right now, what?
This won't change anybody's pay right now.
Correct.
Other than, I shouldn't, I should be very clear, other than the training officer.
Training officer, yes.
Yeah, who were actually adding a premium to his hourly rate because he, being on a 40-hour week, is paid much less than the lead medics who are on shift. That equals that out.
The RCA's got the financial impact for changes one and two, no impact. Three, it says $6,200 roughly for the training officer position, and in four, it depends upon the history as it, as you progress. But the question I had in the resolution, I think this was part of the resolution, yes, the Emergency Medical Services Division Classification And Salary Schedule. Everything on page one of the item deals with class code 5410 and 5415, but the salary schedule includes 5460 and 5480. I assume there's no changes in those two, it's just part of the page?
That's correct.
Okay. I didn't know if there was some increase there that we didn't see there, but.
So all of the lead medic training officer, whatever that is, is there one of those?
We have four lead medics.
And what did you start them at per hour?
2050.
You started them at 2050?
Yes. Except for one who came in, she was a senior lead medic, and she's currently higher than that in the range, I believe it's 2350.
Well, there's no way it's nothing cost more, but I'm not going to argue today. One question I had too, chief, was just about recruitment. I mean, when you cap the EMT at 20, I mean, you probably were self-capping that already or most people were there. I mean, is, do we worry about recruitment and trying to fill more of those positions, bringing people in from areas?
I'm not at this point. We've had good recruitment, and basically, what we're seeing is some of these figures, the hourly figure doesn't necessarily look all that great, but they have built-in overtime with their shift schedule. So basically, when we recruit, I think in the future, we're going to start to use, we'll be able to have a history, so we can use more of a salary, more of an annual salary range, instead of an hourly range. And that should give people a better idea of what they're going to make in, you know, in real life.
Yeah, I think that's going to be critical, because I think we want to show that ability for them to come here and make a living, and I understand a lot of these EMTs have multiple jobs, we do get that, but.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we're competitive, especially when trying to fill these positions.
I appreciate that. If I feel in any way that we're at a point where we wouldn't be, I'll certainly come to you for an adjustment.
So this would be, if this passes, this would be effective immediately?
Yes.
Or retroactively?
Immediately.
Just go on forward.
Going forward.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
But it's not affecting any other positions except for number three, your training officer position?
Right. Thanks.
Thank you. Nine's, actions relating to grants, resolution authorizing emergency exclusion grant funds for the Community Action Agency for Sulan Homelessness Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program. B is a resolution.
Bob, I have a question on that. I just, can you come up here and explain to us what Welcome Home Center is?
Yes.
I know it's for the homeless, and I know we're getting grants and everything, but you're fighting homes for the homeless, is that the?
Welcome Home is one of our programs that we fund, and that one is actually an apartment style living, and they offer housing for families, working families. So it's located on Casman Street, it's intermixed with other apartment units, so they're living with, with market-rate apartments, and then.
So how does that work? Can they stay there for?
They can only stay there for a specific amount of time. It's considered transitional housing. They could stay as long as 24 months, according to the funding, but the Welcome Home program moves them out much quicker than that. Most of their clients aren't long enough to save up a deposit or whatever it is, and so usually they stay about three to six months at that program.
Are these furnished apartments?
Yes, they're fully furnished, they receive donations from churches and the community, so they also help people to take things with them, so they can get set up in their new apartment, you know, because they're leaving a fully furnished apartment, basically nothing, but they help them come up with furniture, bedding, kitchen supplies, things like that. It's a really good program.
How many do you, how many units do you have at one time?
Um, we are funding two units in that building, but they also have other units that aren't funded with our funds, they're funded with other. I think they have a total of seven units, if I remember right, in that structure, so.
Thank you, thank, that's great.
Okay.
Yeah.
C is a resolution authorizing community development block grant funds for Community Action Agency and Sulan Homelessness Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program. D is a resolution supporting an application for the Housing Trust Fund to the Sulan Community Foundation. E is a resolution approving applications to Simcoe Metropolitan Planning Organization for Surface Transportation Block Rent Program. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services for North Sioux City, South Dakota. B is approving a consulting services agreement with JEO Consulting for the Rose Hill Alley Inlet Sidewalk and Sidewalk Grant Program. I'd like to vote on that separately, please. Step out?
Yeah.
Oh, she's left. Well, I'll call the roll then. But they help them come up with furniture, bedding, kitchen supplies, things like that. It's a really good program.
How many do you, how many units do you have at one time?
Um, we are funding two units in that building, but they also have other units that aren't funded with our funds. They're funded with other. I think they have a total of seven units, if I remember right, in that structure, so.
Good. Thank you, thank, that's great.
Okay.
Yeah.
C is a resolution authorizing community development block grant funds for Community Action Agency and Suland Homelessness Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program. D is a resolution supporting an application for the Housing Trust Fund to the Suland Community Foundation. E is a resolution approving applications to Simcoe Metropolitan Planning Organization for Surface Transportation Block Rant Program. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services for North Sioux City, South Dakota. B is approving a consulting services agreement with JEO Consulting for the Rose Hill Alley Inlet Sidewalk and Sidewalk Ramp Program. I'd like to vote on that separately, please. Step out?
Yeah.
Oh, she's left. Well, I'll call the roll then. Are you ready to write it down? Because we're moving on.
I don't know if I can. I can cover.
10B, 10, 10B, on the Rose Hill Alley Inlet Sidewalk and Sidewalk Ramp Project. Do you have it on 10B? Okay.
Which item number?
10B.
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 Title JEO.
Okay. For separate roll call votes, Scott?
No, and the reason I'm voting no is, number one, the fee is unbelievable. I realize all the reasons why I don't buy any of them. Two, it seems like we just will give JEO most of our consulting agreements because it's going that way. And I've had that problem with DGR, I'll have that problem with JEO, I'll have that problem with HR Green. When it appears that they're getting 90% of our work or 70, it's, it's just, something's not right.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Can I ask a question before I vote? Who's on the selection committee or who were they? Is this all Neighborhood Services?
The selection committee for this particular one consisted of Jeff Hanson and then Brittany Anderson and Brett Langley from Engineering, and then John O'Brien from Utilities? From Utilities.
And how big's the project?
Total estimated cost is around $205,000.
35% engineering fees. 35%. I don't care how difficult it is, 35% is unbelievable. God, I want to be, on my next life, I've said this before, let me be an engineer for the city of Sioux City. Because at 35%, I don't care how difficult that job is, they better make a lot of money.
Do we send bids out for this?
No.
We complete an RFQ process and this is funded federally with CDBG funds. And so we are not allowed to negotiate with two at once. We have to negotiate with one first. If we cannot come to an agreement, we have to go with the second. We sent it out to five firms and two responded. And so that is what the group reviewed as part of their process are those two responses.
Can you say who the other group was?
Um, DGR.
Surprise, surprise. But the, federal law doesn't allow you to negotiate.
With two at the same time, correct, yes.
How do you ever get a little competition into it?
You don't. That's the problem. And the other problem is, I'm not even going to go there. Let's just vote and move on.
I thought you wanted to come back as a lawyer in your second line.
No, I've been, I'm changing. When I saw 35%, I want to be an engineer now. Even you attorneys aren't that bad, so. Although I would like you to check and see. We would like, we'd like to know what the.
Oh, God, this is getting.
Asked for that one, didn't I?
You did.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Well, again, I've at least had my protest vote in because that's unbelievable to me. C is a resolution approving.
Hey, Bob, one more thing before you go any further. So what can we do about this if this is the way it runs?
Well, if it's federal law, there's not much you can do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Sure. Jill Wondersight, Neighborhood Services Manager. With this project, we do have, we're proposing the reconstruction of 37 curb ramps to make them ADA accessible. And so when we do work like that, we do have to do a survey at every single corner. There's a lot of design work that goes in to ensure that we're meeting those federal requirements with regard to slope and those kinds of things. So it's very labor-intensive. We are also utilizing the consultant to do the Davis Bacon interviews and wage rate reviews and those kinds of things too, so that does add a little bit of a cost. But the majority of the additional costs is due to the labor associated with designing those curb ramps.
Okay, here's my next question. Can we negotiate their bid?
No.
So once this bid is done, we can't say, okay, come on now?
We did do an RFQ process, so they did not submit price. And so then we go back to them and negotiate. We did negotiate this down from where it started at. And we felt like, after we conferred with Engineering, that it was a standard per-hour rate and the amount of hours they were proposing with regard to the ramps, that it was comparable to other projects.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director, the thing with the quality-based election, once you go, they could turn down the bid and go to DGR. But once you turn that down, you can't go back to JEO and negotiate again. Once you pass on JEO, you have to go to the second most qualified bidder. There's rank based on qualifications in accordance with the group that they put together, so.
So, but if they bid, if DGR bid lower?
You will never know.
You'll never know.
Okay, yeah, that's my point. So my point is, if, let's say that they, let's say they did. Let's, let's even say they didn't. You could still negotiate, right?
Yeah, but they, they could hold their price. They could come in at $80,000 and then now you don't have a third one to go to because you only had two of the five, who were the other three firms?
There were just two that submitted.
Yeah, but how would they know what, what?
Oh, um, HR Green, McClure and Olson.
So, I mean, you already had three that didn't even submit, so.
So the other, excuse me, go ahead, Dave.
Well, I mean, you could go, and then you could go through the whole RFP process again if you.
How do the selection committees go about keeping track and making sure that it's, it's fair and available for everybody to get a shot at city work?
Well, in this case, you have to go based on the qualifications of the submittal. You can't say, one of your parts, your qualifications can't be, they haven't gotten a job recently.
No, but. No, but of the people that are qualified.
Well, I'm not even going to go there.
I was going to say, for the people that are qualified, you've got two that are qualified, but if one's gotten 10 opportunities and the other's only gotten two, would you go to the two?
No, based on, if you go with the true quality-based election, which you're required to do because it's got federal funds in it, you have to take the firm which you have ranked as the most qualified firm.
So you have the same set of criteria for each?
Yes.
With different review committees, typically, there's different people on each committee.
But they must have passed if you, if you got, both passed? Or they didn't pass? And then you had to make a decision?
Yeah, they just ranked one higher than the other one.
Okay.
Did I, did I read or misread during our homework that Rose Hill, this is the next to the last step of completing the project?
Yes.
Thank God.
Overall. But I'm, yeah, but Mayor, I just, I'm looking at overall of the project, what it's going to take to get it completed and get it done right. And, because I think we have something else on the agenda following this.
Yes.
Coming up. Okay. Thank you.
Jill, the only thing that I would add to this, and I know I've worked with Dave quite a bit on other projects worried about just with the ADA compliance. Can we try to make sure that we are being proactive and looking, I understand, meaning, trust me, no one understands more than myself about meeting the letter of the law and the intent behind it, I think can sometimes be two different things. Can we try to look, the grades shouldn't be the same out there, right, Dave? I mean.
You're not going to have the issue.
It shouldn't be similar at all, but I just, we need to keep that in mind with these future sidewalk projects and the ramp-based projects. We need to make sure that we're looking at the grade of the sidewalk involved. Because sometimes, especially on Glen Avenue, you can't make it the raid that makes sense for anyone with a disability walking or in a chair, so.
If this looks like Glen Avenue and you pay 35% engineering fees, I will tell you, shame on all of you and shame on all of you. Because this better not look like Glen Avenue.
And I, and I think our in-house people have learned their lesson on Glen Avenue and we're going to get that.
I hope we have, because that, a very costly project, what we're going to spend straightening that mess up out there. Had we just asked for waivers.
Well, there's no.
Had we just asked for waivers that even the DOT said we would have gotten.
Well, but the problem is, there's no one that you ask for a waiver. You just have to determine whether you're getting a waiver. There's no person you take to, to get a final say and it's very gray on.
But you have a way to justify your waivers.
And you, but it just depends on who you talk to, how much of a waiver you can get, so. It's very gray.
Well, I talked to Dave, I know, I know Dagan wouldn't want me to say this, but I talked to him and he said we could have made that project a lot better than what we ended up with, and we're not done yet.
And that's why I think it's important to move forward and keep that standard, so I just wanted to say that out loud. So, thank you, Jill.
Thanks.
C is a resolution approving an amendment number one to the program scheduled, the Home Investment Partnership Program for Rehabilitation of 1620 West Forest Street. D is a resolution approving consulting services agreement with ground effects for the Rose Hill Park Improvement Splash Path and Expansion Project. E is a resolution approving a contract and performance bond for utility services for the Singing Hills Brown Storyd Reservoir Exterior Painting Project. F is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for one heavy-duty fixed route low-floor biodiesel bus. G is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for one heavy-duty fixed route low-floor biodiesel bus with one light-duty bus with surveillance. Mike, are you here? Where are you buying fuel, where are you buying biodiesel fuel?
I think they're just biodiesel-capable. We are not currently buying any. They're just capable of using that fuel.
Shouldn't we be?
Uh, I guess we can look into that. I don't know what CMG's capability is, but we can sure look into it. We're not currently, though, to your initial question.
If Mr. Hanson and his staff would finally agree to let that blender do that biodiesel in town, we would be able to try that because they would emit less carbon emissions, right?
And that's where, you know, these funds are coming under CMAC, so CMAC's all about the mitigation.
Okay. I would like you to check in to see what the difference in cost of that biodiesel fuel would be and what the gas mileage would be or miles per gallon would be. Because I think we ought to go get into that if we can. I think we ought to get into that on our trucks that allow us.
And through our CIP, we're just going through and replacing fuel tanks at Transit too. So if we need one more separation in the large tank, we can sure look at that.
Okay. H is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement with Bert Gurney and Associates for the inspection rebuild and impeller replacement at 1425 Bluff Road. I is a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the joint cooperation agreement with Suland Economic Development Corporation.
Mayor?
Yes.
That's, I just want to, full disclosure, I sit on the SEDC board. That's one of the committees that you appointed me to, to serve on the board. I'm still going to vote on I unless the city attorney thinks I should abstain, but.
You sit there because of us, not because of anything else.
Right.
I'll practice law here and tell you, you should be able to vote for that, I would think, shouldn't he?
And your role is advisory to the board, correct?
No, Ken, I'm a, no, I'm a voting member on the board of.
Well, I'm a voting member on the chamber board, but I still vote for the, the chamber, the TSI and that.
As careful as I am, I, I'm.
Yeah, I understand.
Feel comfortable that there isn't a conflict?
I'm comfortable voting on it. And I ran it by Ken very briefly and he, you don't have any objections?
Well, no, you'd only have objection if you voted no. You're not voting no, are you?
No, he didn't ask me how I was going to vote.
Aren't you voting yes? I'm sure Ken's all for you.
I just want to disclose that, though.
J is a resolution approving a release and satisfaction of the contract for the lease and sale of land for private development in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area and consent to the sale by the museum-building properties.
Now, this one I do have a conflict of interest on and I will abstain. Thank you.
You have the check?
Tomorrow.
Okay. 11 are actions authorizing, B is a resolution authorizing final payment to Thompson Electric for the Heritage Park Ramp Lighting Renovation Project. I need to abstain on that one. C is a resolution approving a change orders number two and three and authorizing final payment to Paragon Restoration for the 2017 Discovery Park Ramp Repair Project. E is a resolution authorizing final payment to MLS Landscape and Design for the construction of the Pearl Street Park. E is a resolution approving settlement of tort claims and authorizing payment thereof. 12 are actions relating to property. A is a resolution approving a deed from Morningside College for the development of residential apartments located 300 block of Wesley Parkway.
I need to abstain from that, please. Conflict of interest.
And we need to, I got a note from Mr. Nelson. We need to make sure that we state how cooperative Morningside College was in this process and we much appreciate it.
I would appreciate that.
Handle that right, Mr. Nelson, okay. B is a resolution accepting the offer of sale for leasehold interest and property rights from Cornhusker International Truck for the Bridgeport West Improvements Phase One and Two project property at 2601 Bridgeport Drive. C is a resolution accepting the offer for sale from Great Plains Realty for the Bridgeport West Improvements Phase Two and Three project property at 2601 Bridgeport Drive. D is a resolution proposing to sell property vacated in Monroe Street at 351143th Street. Petitioner's Curtis Lee Bradam. 13 are appointments to boards and commissions. A is a motion appointing Matthew Thompson to the Building and Housing Code Board for a three-year term waiving the policy that no person shall serve more than two consecutive terms. B is a motion appointing Steve Bruning to the Building and Housing Code Board for three-year term waiving the policy that no person shall serve more than two consecutive terms. C is a resolution appointing Doug Rose to the Building and Housing Code Board for a three-year term waiving the policy that no person shall serve more than two consecutive terms. D is a motion appointing Marissa Cummings to the EFPPC for a three-year term. E is a motion appointing Tom Bickreiter to the EFPPC for a three-year term. F is a motion appointing Brooke Gilbert to the EAB for a three-year term. G is a motion reappointing Adam Wheelock to the EAB for a three-year term. H is a motion appointing Jonathan Bedoski to the HPC to complete the balance of a three-year term. I is a motion appointing Mark Randers to the Parks and Rec Board for a three-year consecutive term waiving the policy, three-year term waiving the policy that no person shall serve more than two consecutive terms.
Mayor, that's the parking and sidewalk.
Oh, what did I say? I'm sorry, park.
Parks and Rec.
Okay, parking sidewalk, sorry. 14 is a motion of total checks issued for the reporting period December 2017 in the amount of $9,978,144.64. 15 are applications for beer or for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list come forward if you have any questions. 16 are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have any questions. 17, receipt of minutes. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone that be heard on any of those come forward now. Seeing none, we will vote. Passes 5-0 unless otherwise noted. 18, recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. A is a hearing and motion rezoning 3500 Business Highway 75 in various locations on North Brook and Zone Classification BP to GI. Petitioner Floyd and Dakota P&amp;Z recommends denial. Motion requested to delete this item.
I will let Jeff Hanson address this. I think this had to do with something.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. An update on this project, since we've had a couple items related to some properties up in Northbrook. The petitioner in this case, Brad Cummings and Dick Salem with Floyd Dakota LLC, have requested to delete their item. They will be coming back with a new rezoning application property that's fronting on Northbrook, which was some of the concerns both by the staff and the adjacent property owners. They own some property to the north with frontage along Highway 75. They'll be coming back with a rezoning request for that property. And just to make sure that the application is clear, we advise them to go ahead and delete that and come back with a new application, which will start over with Planning and Zoning Commission, new public notice and notice. The other item related to that, as you recall, there was a board of adjustment item that was ultimately remanded back to the board of adjustment and was heard at our last board of adjustment meeting last week. The petitioner had requested a conditional use permit for outdoor storage on Northbrook and that petitioner has since deleted that item as well. And that tenant will no longer be locating in that new structure.
And for additional clarification, Jeff, maybe I have this confused with another item, but was this the one where the notice was not timely published?
So you'll notice on item number 20, we have a deferral on February 5th for another planning and zoning item, which was heard at our last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The Journal did advise city staff that they failed to publish the required notices in the paper as we have sent to them. And so on 18, if the petitioner was not requesting to delete the item, we would have had to defer it. In this case, they're asking to delete it. And you'll notice on number 20, the other Planning and Zoning Commission item, we're asking for a deferral because of that error in the publication.
So we're deferring 20 and deleting 21.
Correct. And a new notice was published in the Journal.
Not 21.
Number's got.
18, we're deleting.
Yes, sir.
And that's what I moved, is a deletion. Is there a second?
Second.
So the notification for 18 and 20, there was a notice that was republished for the February 5th hearing. So if there's any confusion, there is a new notice scheduling it for the next meeting date.
Journal give you a discounted fee for making that mistake. Passes 5-0. 19 is an ordinance dedicating a park purposes and naming a tract of land at 3300 Lion Drive as Cone Park. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading, second?
We did have, this was approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission. One, I guess, can I get? One, I guess kind of continuing theme of comments and questions that are always asked when one of these dedication things comes up for a park is the impact on surrounding property owners, particularly some of the ordinances that restrict alcohol within a certain more limited footage. Someone always asks about that every time. In this case, there's nothing really developed around the park, other than other parkland, namely the Explorer Stadium, and then there's just kind of woods. So it's not an immediate problem of having a close by alcohol establishment.
The baseball team, the baseball field's not within the distance?
But it's also parkland. Is that right?
The baseball park, as well as Cone Park, serve alcohol, but the code discusses the sale of alcohol for off-premise use, and all those uses that surround Cone Park are for on-premise only. There's no carryout sales.
Okay.
Same with quads and all that right there, right?
Yeah.
I would point out, this item was also heard at that Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This item does not require a notice in the paper, and so we're not requesting a deferral for this item. A park dedication does not require the Journal notification, so we can take action on this item.
I'm surprised we haven't done this before, before the park opened, but...
The legal description was being prepared, and that's what we were waiting for.
Lawyers.
Matt's on top of these things. We're gonna vote on, using our...
I voted about seven times here.
Passes 12 and nothing.
Obviously feel good to guys, just want y'all to know that out there.
Passes 5-0. Uh, move, or anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Dan, I don't know.
I know.
Yeah, Dan, let's share here.
I'm just excited about Cone Park.
You're excited about the tower.
You've been that back down the hill?
I have not been.
His buddy Pete won't go.
The mayor and I will be going shortly.
But I found two friends out there that have gone.
Passes 5-0.
They'll go with me.
29, Gordon Drive, petitioner Handy LC. P&amp;Z recommends approval. We, I'll move that we defer this till February 5th, 2018.
Second.
20 is a hearing resolution determining an area the city be blighted in economic development area designating it as an urban renewal area project and adopting amendment two to the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. Deferred from January 8th, the motion is requested to delete it. I'll move that.
Second.
Go ahead.
This is item 21, correct?
21, yes.
Renee Billings, Economic Development Specialist. Mayor and council, I just want to provide you with a brief update for this project. As many of you know, on November 20th, we came forward with a proposal to sell a four-acre piece of city-owned property in the former Stockyards to HCC Enterprises for the construction of a multi-use sports complex. Since then, they've hired an engineer and contractor to assist them with extensive work on their site plan. Um, they have identified a large 50-foot sanitary sewer easement on the west side of this property, along with a 25-foot electrical easement on the east side of the property, which, um, really hinders their ability to put the building they would like to do on the site. Um, so we've met with them several times, city staff, um, and the developers and their contractor and engineer, uh, to try and resolve this issue. We, um, are proposing to look at selling them a, vacating and selling a portion of South Lafayette Street to them, which allows them more buildable space on the site. Um, and in doing so, we would look at relocating and realigning South Lafayette Street to the west side of the property, um, and then connecting further down by the Expo Center. So it's just a portion that we would realign. Um, as part of the project, the developer would construct the street and dedicate it back to the city. Um, and then we would vacate, like I said, a portion of the South Lafayette Street to them to build their facility. This would also allow us to create more of a campus fill with the Baumgart's Expo Center and, um, the arena, allow for use of joint parking, three different sections of parking to use for all three, um, or for both of the facilities, and, uh, remove any pedestrian, um, access across the street, so it'll make it a little safer in that area as well. So at this time, we are, um, we are issuing, or we are noticing a large portion of land in the area. Um, we continue to work with them, trying to identify exactly what portion they need for, um, to build their building on, and then we will come back with legal descriptions to, uh, give the exact amount.
That's what 23 and 24 are.
Yes.
Right.
So we are proposing to delete that, the first 21 and 22.
Twenty-two.
For that reason.
And what, what you've outlined would, if we're gonna do any kind of development in that area, what you've outlined would be necessary to do regardless.
Correct. The only, I mean, there's not a lot of buildings that you could put on that piece of property due to those easements, so...
Because it's so narrow.
Yes. So maybe a...
Actually, what we're doing in this case is, we will be putting the realigned road over the top of the easement, because in, in looking at, that's all, that's the only thing we could do with that easement area.
But it served its purpose back in the day.
It's actually, it's actually a relatively new easement from, uh, related to I-29.
I was thinking, I was thinking of the road.
Of what?
But you didn't have the, just the road location.
No, it was new, too.
The road was as well?
Yeah, that's a new road.
That we're moving?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I thought it was, I thought it'd been there for years.
It had, well, it was put in after we demolished, uh, John Morrell.
Yeah, it's not that old. It's not the old John Morrell road, if that's what you're wondering.
That's what, yeah.
No.
No.
Yeah, Lafayette's been there for years. We have, that's...
But not that Lafayette.
But no, no, that's right. Not in the location.
We received grant funds to re, to align it the way it is now.
Okay.
So...
All right. Well, thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes, and a second.
And a second.
And you're ready to vote. Passes 5-0. 22 is a hearing resolution accepting a proposal of HC Enterprises for the purchase of land in combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and authorizing development minimum assessment stream of property at 500 block of South Lafayette, deferred from January 8th, 2018. We need a motion to delete. I'll make that.
Second.
No, that road was when I got, first got back on the council. Seven years ago.
Seven years ago?
Yeah, six, seven years ago.
Okay.
23 is a resolution setting dates of public hearing on amendment number two of the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Plan for the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that.
Second.
You're just trying to check to see if I'm really, I'm losing, aren't you?
Yeah, it's a test. So far, you're passing.
You're trying to get away for the attorney to sign some document that I'm not fit for a public...
Alex, your vote didn't take, I don't believe.
It's weird.
There we go, thank you.
Passes 5-0. 24 is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area, accepting a proposal of HCC Enterprises setting the date for public hearing property in the 500 block of South Lafayette. Passes 5-0. Citizen concerns, are there any citizens who would like to be heard? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Aye.
My name's Lillian Carlson, and we have a concern, um...
Can I have your address, please?
Yeah, 1315 West Sixth.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, we had the curb and gutter job, or the, we were on the plan for this year, 2017. So they came out and did the curb and gutter, and at the time, we had asked if we could, we asked Eric Jones with the engineering department if we could put a double driveway in instead of an existing single driveway, and he said yes. So we took the process of what we needed to do. We, we had bought a parcel of land, adjoining our land, and we had to put that in one parcel because we pay two tax form or tax, property tax, taxes on it. So then we did that, and the assessor's office joined both properties, and then they still said that we could put the double driveway in. So then they said, okay, now you have to do the, we joined both properties legally because of the names on the property deed. So we then did that, to join the properties for us, then we went to the engineers' department to get the permit. Everything was said and done. So there were some issues with the gutter and curbs. So Eric Jones and Brittany with the engineering department, they came out and took pictures. I did not meet them on site that day. So low and behold, we've got the contractor to do the driveway. They had it done, and then she sent us a letter stating that it needs to be torn out. Can't do this, can't do this, I'm sorry.
What has to be torn out?
The new driveway, and we paid for it. And it just, it was already approved, the, the...
Originally, they were gonna do the curb and gutter.
I'm gonna need your name and address, too, please, okay?
I'm Al Mcganderson, I live same address.
Okay, thank you.
We're sisters, brothers, sisters, and then we have a brother also lives there. Anyway, it was a vacant lot. We did a lot of the upkeep on it over the years. We've done a lot. We've lived there 45 years, so...
We've beautified the city, in other words.
Yeah, and it's a nice-looking property. We get a lot of compliments on it. So originally, they were gonna do the gutter. We got the letter thrown on the doorstep, the Thursday before, they were coming out Monday to do it. And anyway, it was kind of a rush job on that part, but they made everybody in the neighborhood aware. We've been told that they were gonna, they were maybe replace our single driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And then again, we heard they might put in two feet into our driveway along the new gutter and, or new asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then we've, over the, I don't know, eight weeks, we weren't parked in the driveway, we were on the street, and, uh, we've been wanting to extend the driveway or fix it or whatever for a long time. Same on the curbs and gutters. We were told probably about eight years ago that if we were willing to go in half with the city on the price of the concrete, they would do what we wanted done. And we've since, you know, we, we've put in a new T sidewalk that we had from the main sidewalk to the, the street.
But it was, it was already there for years.
We've done a lot of it on our own, just to, you know, the upkeep.
Did your contractor take out a permit for the driveway?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure he did, because he said he would.
We did ourselves.
Well, for what we had done, yes.
You got that permit?
We got the permit right here, yeah.
I'll practice a little engineering, uh, supervision here.
And the reason we have to connect the two, the two properties together is on one property, they had our middle initials, and then when we bought this property next door, evidently they, either the initials were on that and on when our property, our initials weren't. So we were told we had to go link the two properties together, and, uh, the only thing it was, they just took out the middle initial. So now both properties are in all of our names.
So what, what's, why are they telling you, you, you have to take out the driveway?
Well, Brittany said that, um, she didn't know that we were gonna take the single and extend it to a double, and she knew it. I mean, they signed up on the permit and everything, and we're just sick of, I'm just sick about it.
How big is your, how big is your new driveway?
Um, 24 foot.
Yeah, we went 24 feet wide.
Hmm?
Uh, that'd be legal. I guess, I don't know the, I'm the guy that's public...
I'd suggest you meet with these people, because they went and they, looks to me like they took out a permit, looks to me like they told you the square footies, looked to me like they told you they were gonna curb cut. When you get a curb cut, that means you're gonna normally extend the driveway.
And everything has been, everything has been...
You did everything right.
Yes, thank you.
We got to February 1st to see what our options are after.
Well, here's your options.
We'll take this new driveway out.
Here's your options. That gentleman back there and this gentleman here are gonna take you out in the hallway, and, and they're gonna figure out what your options are.
It sounds like there's probably some confusion.
Yeah, it sounds like...
Well, I'm Brittany's, the engineering department. Eric Jones moved on to Des Moines to a private contractor. It's like, this is really disappointing.
Yeah.
And I'm heartless, I'm, I'm just so sick of my son.
And that's why we'll make sure, we'll, we'll have them take care of it.
Meet those guys out there in the hallway.
Take care of these options.
You'll have them.
Meet those guys out in the hallway right now.
These guys will, they'll help you out.
Because it looked like you signed up for a curb cut, and it looked like you signed up and told them how many square foot, so I...
Thank you for coming today.
And it looks like an engineer signed off on that to me, so... Okay. Anyone else to be heard? Bob, do you have anything for the good of the order?
I do not.
Okay. Pete?
Uh, just a quick, uh, thank you to the Neighborhood Network. Uh, we haven't met since they had their family night out. I think it was Thursday, January 11th. Um, it was a great event. There were somewhere between 400 and 500 people there. They did a really nice job, uh, and it was bitterly cold that night, but they had plenty of food, lots of activities. I saw bandits, people there.
There were four bandits showed up, I heard.
They threw that football for an hour and a half that I watched them, but, so they were really good. They did a great job, and, and they, uh, had just put together a new network, uh, brochure, so I picked one up for all of you in case you ever had the need to give somebody a call. But they did do a great job, and I appreciate everything the Neighborhood Network does, and the kids really love it, so just want to acknowledge them and thank them for all their hard work on it.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Rhonda?
Thanks. Um, the only thing I would like to say is, uh, I know that there was a, quite this snow emergency recently. I know we didn't have, um, council to talk about it last week and stuff, but I just wanted to acknowledge, I know everyone has complaints or thinks that it should have been handled differently, and everyone suddenly becomes an expert, but I would just say that what I witnessed, um, like, for instance, I, I mean, I just heard different stories from different people. Some were negative, but some were overwhelmingly positive, and I know I drove by just off of my street, a snowplow that was actually pulled over and helping shovel out a woman that was stuck in the middle of the road, and it was just acts of that kindness that I think we don't highlight enough. Um, and so I just wanted to thank all of those people, not only the road crews that were out there, but also the people that had to work, uh, in the hospitals, the police force, everyone that, that went to work even in the middle of that storm, um, and that ultimately helped us get through it. So I just would like to thank all the people that were a part of that, um, because I saw a lot of kindness and a lot of people trying to help out there, too, so, thank you. That's all I got.
Last Thursday, I attended the community health needs assessment, uh, meeting, and it was excellent, and there was a lot of good discussion about the health of our community, so, uh, it was a, it was a really good meeting. That's all I have.
Uh, I know we've talked about this, but I think it's time for action. I think we need to, to decide what we're gonna do with the EPAB board, because I don't... Oh, go ahead.
It'll be the agenda item on Monday at the request of Councilmember Capron, this coming Monday.
Okay. I knew that Councilman Capron would be on top of that. So, that's good. Number two, I, listen, I'm not gonna, just, everybody can take a shot at whether we did a good job or bad job in the snow removal, but I will say this. There are lots of corners that I wish our staff would drive around. One, one in particular, I told Dave, is if you go up to, and this has no bearing on me whatsoever, but if you go up to Healan, which I think we need to be terribly careful around schools, you'll notice that the north half of that lane going over to Wesley Way is snow-packed, I mean, three or four foot of snowpack. You go on that bridge, and unfortunately, now, the only way you're gonna get that is with loaders or with road graders, because it's packed so tight. And I think we need to have our supervisors drive around the town right now while the weather's good and look at some of these areas, because there are some areas where the snow's sticking out way too far yet, and, and again, I'm not taking shots at your crews or anything else, but now's the time to do it rather than wait till we have another snowstorm, and this snow is so hard-packed, we won't, it'll be worse than better. And, you know, I'm disappointed that you tell me our road graders are in such bad shape that we can't push them. This is probably all the more reason we should look at it. The quality of the road grader we build by not, whether it's a low bid item or not, I know that you can make that argument either way, but, um, some of this stuff, even on our city streets, the road graders, the only way you're gonna break that up, because the snowplow blade's just gonna turn over on you in that hard-packed snow. But, but I worry about there, because I was turning left there the other night, and a lady was coming up thinking she had that turning lane, but there was only about a half a lane, so if we don't clear that out, it's gonna be a problem around that school with the next snowstorm, so.
I'll pass along to the night crew.
Yeah, I just wish they'd drive around town and take a look at.
You said it's the bridge, uh.
The bridge right over there off Wesley Way and right by Healan. It's, it's half of the, the north lane, I would call it, you could call it west lane over there, but half of that lane is still just ice-packed, and it's not their fault. They couldn't move it, but they need to get it moved with a loader or something now.
Sure.
I had the opportunity to take a tour of Triumph Seaboard, and they are doing very well there. I was impressed how automated that plan is. I knew it would be just from doing the tour that we all took, but if you get a chance, you might want to call. Tori O'Connor's actually who's in charge, and ask her, you can do the tour without having to go on the floor. They've got windows, but it's through the window tour, you can see pretty much everything. It's worth the trip. So, they, they're up to about, I think, 1,100 employees all total right now, so. So, with that, I move we adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.